Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council meeting for Tuesday, July 18th, 2023. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Griscoviac.
Here.
Councilmember Rayrower.
Here.
Councilmember Novak.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Here.
Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here.
Thank you. Why don't we adopt this evening's agenda?
Motion to adopt the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion by Carlson, second by Novak, to adopt the agenda. Is there any corrections or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that the agenda is adopted. And brings us right up to item one, and we might as well get right to it. Oaths of our new, for our new police officers. I think these people are all here for you, Captain Steiner. Make their way in here. I'll try not to block them. But good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. It's my great honor to have the opportunity to introduce our four newest Coon Rapids police officers to the community this evening. Before we do that, I just wanted to take a minute to comment on the uniqueness of this group. This group is unique to something that I haven't seen in my time here, that they are all four laterals. They were all cops in good standing in other good departments around the metro area, and they chose to come to Coon Rapids PD. In fact, I believe in each case, we're the only place they applied, I think. And that's significant, or at least work with me on it. That's significant because our industry and our profession is struggling a little bit right now. What used to be hundreds of applicants for a single job is now just a handful. And we continue to attract talent from other good agencies, and we lose very little. And I know this is not a coincidence, there's reasons for this. And first and foremost, it speaks to the culture that we have here. I know every department thinks they've got great culture, but I know we do here. And it's nothing that I can take credit for, but it's a foundation that was laid decades before I came around here. And it carries a lot of weight around our profession. Also, in Coon Rapids, we take a common sense approach to law enforcement. We still ask our cops to do proactive police work. And, Mr. Mayor and council, whether you know it or not, you're all part of that. As different as this council is from each other, and we range on views, we always seem to come together in this town on issues of public safety. And that matters. It projects stability, and it helps build a reputation, consistency and stability that makes this place a good place to attract officers, and not every city can say that. So thank you for your support of our police department. Now with that, I'd like to turn now to introducing, in order of seniority, our four newest officers. I'm gonna step aside a little bit. First, we have Dan Enstrom. Dan grew up in Inver Grove Heights. He graduated from Simley High School in 2011, then attended Minnesota State University of Mankato, and graduated in 2015 before attending Skills and Hibbing. After being a police reserve and an explorer, he was hired as a police officer for the city of Roseville in 2016. In a short time, we'll have Dan's wife, Kelsey, come and pin on badge 192 to him. Next to him is Officer Jacob Hatzenbeller. Jake grew up primarily in Blaine, went to Spring Lake Park High School, and graduated in 2017. Graduated with his associate's degree from Rasmussen College in 2020, and was hired as a CSO in the city of Maple Grove in 2019, then hired as a police officer there in 2021. His mother, Leslie, will be pinning on badge 193 tonight. Next, we have Officer Georgia Carlson. She grew up in Shoreview, Minnesota, and attended Roseville High School. She graduated in 2016, then went to Century College and graduated from Metro State University with her bachelor's degree in law enforcement in 2020. She was a Ramsey County Police Explorer and a Lino Lake CSO before being hired as a full-time police officer in 2020 with the Lino Lakes Police Department. And last, oh, I'm sorry, her father, Mike, will be pinning on her badge, number 194 tonight. And last but not least, Officer Drake Malaski, who grew up in Eagan, Minnesota. He attended Eastview High School and graduated in 2013. Earned a bachelor's degree from Minnesota State University of Mankato in 2017. He was an Eagan Explorer and was selected for the DEA Leadership Academy back when he was in high school. He was hired in 2018 as a Rosemount Police Officer, and his mother, Peg, will be pinning his badge on tonight, badge 195. So all four of these officers have been put to the test in our field training program and have successfully completed it, thus earning the right to stand here tonight to get their numbered, uniquely numbered, police badge for the city of Coon Rapids. They all came to us knowledgeable police officers, but we made sure they understood the expectations that we have here in doing things the Coon Rapids way, in a way that embodies our core values of trust, professionalism, and compassion. And I'm proud to say I believe that they all do. To our new officers, this organization is very proud to have you guys on board. You're about to receive your badges, they're unique to you. We don't recycle badges here, nobody's ever worn them before, and nobody will ever wear them again. They're entrusted to you by the citizens of Coon Rapids, and they symbolize a mutual commitment that we have for each other. A commitment that you do things always the Coon Rapids way, modeling our core values of trust, professionalism, and compassion. And just as we ask that commitment from you, we believe that requires us to make a commitment as well to you, to your families. We want you to know that we're gonna commit to support your career as Coon Rapids Police Department, or Coon Rapids Police Officers. We're gonna invest in you with training, equipment, and we're gonna give you the structure and guidance that you need to have a successful, long career in law enforcement. We take that commitment very seriously, and we ask that you do as well. That's where you. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I think we're ready to turn it over to you, if you're ready. And I'll have the first officer come.
After they get pinned. The first one will get pinned, and then I'll swear a bid.
Okay.
Right?
That works. All right, we'll have Dan's wife, Kelsey, come up and do the first badge pinning. If you'll step over to the middle here.
You probably want a badge.
I think this is how we did it last time, though, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah.
If you would raise your right hand, I'm gonna hold this out, and then I'm gonna read these in short little bursts, all right?
Sure.
It's Enstrom?
Yes. Daniel.
Yes.
I, Daniel Enstrom, do solemnly swear.
I, Daniel Enstrom, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Sorry, of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And discharge faithfully.
And discharge faithfully.
The duties of a police officer.
The duties of a police officer.
For the city of Coon Rapids.
For the city of Coon Rapids.
And the county of Anoka.
And the county of Anoka.
And state of Minnesota.
And state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations, thank you. Go ahead. Hatzenbeller?
Hatzenbeller.
All right. Just checking, make sure you do it.
I, Jacob Hatzenbeller, do solemnly swear.
I, Jacob Hatzenbeller, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And discharge faithfully.
And discharge faithfully.
The duties of a police officer.
The duties of a police officer.
For the city of Coon Rapids.
For the city of Coon Rapids.
And the county of Anoka.
And the county of Anoka.
And state of Minnesota.
And state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Thanks, Jim.
I, Georgia Carlson, do solemnly swear.
I, Georgia Carlson, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And discharge faithfully.
And discharge faithfully.
The duties of a police officer.
The duties of a police officer.
For the city of Coon Rapids.
For the city of Coon Rapids.
And the county of Anoka.
And the county of Anoka.
And state of Minnesota.
And state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
All right, Drake Malaski?
Yes, sir.
All right. Raise your right hand.
I, Drake Malaski, do solemnly swear.
I, Drake Malaski, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And discharge faithfully.
And discharge faithfully.
The duties of a police officer.
The duties of a police officer.
For the city of Coon Rapids.
For the city of Coon Rapids.
And the county of Anoka.
And the county of Anoka.
And state of Minnesota.
And state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Where Captain Steiner go? How are you gonna follow that up? You're just gonna leave them hang, or what?
This is where you told them to stay for the whole council.
Didn't you already tell them this should stay for the whole meeting? Welcome aboard. We are so thankful that you are here, that you've picked Coon Rapids, and we look forward to years and years of having you around and serving in both ways, so. Anything we can do to support you? Come here. Or go to Captain Steiner. Thank you all.
Thank you.
And you truly are all welcome to stay, it shouldn't be a fairly short meeting. Or you can go out to the hallway for pictures, you know. This is, this is when we always see if anybody will be left. I've got a few. We'll just give them a moment to clear the room. All right. Well, that was fun. We have two items on our consent agenda. The first one, yeah, yes, what am I doing? Oh, should we just skip over that? We should probably approve the minutes from our last meeting. Thank you, Councilmember Geisler.
Mr. Mayor, a motion to approve the minutes from July 5th.
Second.
Motion by Geisler and a second by Rayrower. Is there any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the minutes are approved. And then, we have two items on our consent agenda. First is item three, to accept an easement agreement for the Tronsen Creek Townhomes. At its regular meeting, July 21st, the Planning Commission approved final plans for the Tronsen Reserve Apartments. The project consists of a 31-unit townhome development. A 25-foot-wide drainage and utility easement along the south and east portions of the proposed development is necessary to allow for the continued conveyance of public drainage and maintenance access to an existing public ditch that flows along this area. So we're looking to accept the attached Drainage and Utility Easement Agreement with Tronsen Creek LLC for the development of the Tronsen Reserve Apartment Project. And then the second and last item on our consent agenda, which is item four, is to adopt Resolution 23-77, establishing the city manager's salary. It's a summary of our closed meeting from the last, from our last, from our closed workshop. The, on July 5th, the city council held a closed meeting pursuant to Minnesota statutes for the purpose of conducting the city manager's performance review. In attendance at this closed meeting were Mayor Cook, all council members, and city manager Matt Stemwaddle. During the closed meeting, the city council discussed the city manager's job performance during the previous year, and the city council also discussed the terms of the city manager's employment agreement. Upon conclusion of the performance review and the compensation discussion, the city council was agreeable to adjusting city manager Matt Stemwaddle's base salary. The attached resolution establishes the city manager's annual base salary at grade X, step eight, which is $196,892 annually, within the city's 2023 compensation plan, retroactively effective to June 17th, 2023. The city council was further agreeable to adjusting the city manager's vehicle allowance to $500 per month on this, as this allowance had remained at $400 per month since he started in the city manager role in 2015. All other compensa, all the, I'm sorry, all other components of Mr. Stemwaddle's compensation and employment contract will remain unchanged. So we're looking to adopt Resolution 23-77, a resolution establishing the city manager's salary. And that's our complete consent agenda.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Rayrower?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Rayrower and a second by Novak. Is there any discussion or questions? All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. We're all good. Item five on our agenda, our old business, is to consider adoption of ordinances 2284 and 2285. This is planning case 23-12 regarding home occupations, city codes, section 11-304 and 11-1210. This was introduced at our last meeting. Does anybody have any questions or need any follow-up on this before we take action? All right.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Rayrower?
For planning case 23-12, I make a motion to adopt ordinance 2284, amending city code section 11-304. Adopt ordinance 2285, adding city code section 11-1210, and authorize summary publication of ordinances.
Second.
Motion by Rayrower and a second by Carlson. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Item six is planning case 23-13, consider adoption of ordinance 2286, temporary signs and wall signs, city code sections 11-1203.6 and 11-1203.7. Again, this was presented in detail at our last council meeting when it was introduced. And does anybody have any questions on this, or does it, they wanna just move ahead?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance 2286, amending city code sections 11-1203.6 and 11-1203.7, and authorize summary publication.
Second.
Motion by Carlson and a second by Armstrong. Is there a discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Griscoviac?
Really don't have any discussion, other than to say that we don't take, you know, amending city code lightly. These things came before us in work session, then they were introduced, and we had a lively discussion on it all, and it all makes sense, so I support these changes.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Yeah, if you have any more questions about either of those, you'll wanna just watch the city council comments. I'm sure Councilmember Carlson's gonna cover those in great detail.
I'm very excited, Mr. Mayor.
All right, very good. Item seven on our agenda this evening is to consider a joint powers agreement and budget amendment, Resolution 23-76, regarding traffic signal and intersection improvements at Xavier Street and Coon Rapids Boulevard, project 23-14. Mr. Hammer, do you want me to read this, or do you wanna give us just a highlight on it?
Mr. Mayor, I can hit the highlights for you. It is a budget amendment, as well as a joint powers agreement with Anoka County. It's a signal replacement at Xavier Street and Coon Rapids Boulevard, but it also includes some ADA enhancements at Direct River Drive, just a little ways up the, up the road. We had some interactions with a visually impaired person. We were able to satisfy some of those requirements, and it just took a little while to get the funds, get the project. So most of this money, city-related, is state aid eligible, but there is a portion that would not be that, and that's what the budget amendment is for, out of the revolving construction fund. So I'm happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
So, so Mr. Hammer, the ADA improvements at Direct River dot, or Direct River Drive, is that to the existing trail, adding those little ramps or something?
Correct. We're gonna extend those out a little bit to give a little more refuge and put the truncated domes, the little dimples there, for the sensory portion of it, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I'll make a motion to approve the execution of the joint powers agreement and associated budget amendment to the resolving construction fund with Anoka County to reconstruct the traffic signal and perform pedestrian ADA improvements at County State Aid Highway One, which is Coon Rapids Boulevard and Xavier Street, as well as Coon Rapids Boulevard, Service Road, and Direct River Drive intersections.
Second.
Motion by Geisler and a second by Novak. Is there any further discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Griscoviac?
I'm in agreement. I mean, I like what the city and the county has done to prepare for this upgrade to this intersection. I just had a question, and I asked this question, I think, last time, about the cost share with the county. So it's a 50/50 cost share, which seems like the city is paying a little bit too much because it's a county road, right? So I did some checking, and I'm just wondering if we could have a discussion maybe with Anoka County on this in the future, but the policy is 50/50 right now. I'm looking at other cities, other counties, that actually the county pays 100% of a county road signalization intersection. There are other counties that do it by a cost share, by the number of legs. So in this case, there's eight lanes of county road and four lanes of city road. So it's really not a 50/50 thing. There's much more traffic on the county road than there would be on our Xavier's, which is a city street. And I'm just wondering is, you know, have we looked at that, that when there's a major intersection like this, and we're picking up half the cost, or I think we maybe should only be picking up 25%? Is there something that we can get in front of the Yanoka County Board to look at that policy, or what would we do to look at that?
Yes, Councilmember Griscoviac, thank you. It's something I've, some, some questions I've had all along, and actually, this is different than what it was when I started here. So Exhibit C to the agreement, it's in every JPA that's there, that is their standard cost share that, that exists. So we pay by the legs of the intersection and not the lanes of the intersection. So Xavier's is a city street, Coon Rapids Boulevard is a county road, so therefore, we pay for our two adjoining segments, they pay for their two adjoining segments. When I first started, it was, we paid for all of ours and half of theirs. And so this revision was just done probably about two, three years ago, where they felt that anything new should be, we get ours, you get yours, but then it came down to maintenance, they felt that there should be a higher share going to the cities, which that has since been changed. So I can certainly take this back and talk to the highway department, maybe it goes before the transportation committee, but I can tell you, this was recently changed, along with the type of curb that goes in, sidewalks. I mean, there's a lot of costs with this that are more borne by the county than there are for the city. The city's more on the, the lighting, the pedestrian ways, and the county's more of the hard surface and hardscape. I understand your question, and it's interesting that you think about it by lanes and the volume of traffic you're moving versus just the legs of the intersection. So 50/50 is what we got not long ago. We used to be paying, you know, 70% of these projects prior to that. But I will bring that up with them and see where, see where it goes.
And as a follow-up, is there any other cost that the county is paying on this, other than what's in the packet? It looks like we're splitting 773 or so between the two government agencies.
Yeah, that's it. This, that's why it's so expensive for us on this one compared to some of our past ones, that there's no federal funding. This was just a straight-up intersection improvement by the locals.
And that's a typical, sorry, all these questions. But that's typical to use MSA funds in a situation like this?
Yeah, Xavier Street for us is a state aid road, so it would be eligible to do so. Historically, the cost hadn't been that high, that maybe we would just use the revolving construction fund and try to save some of those dollars for either roadway maintenance or other larger projects. But on this one, the cost being higher, we haven't really done any MSA roads for a while. We've been building up that fund, so we felt it would be appropriate to cover those costs primarily out of this. And, and some of those over at Direct River just were not eligible based upon location, and they weren't tied to that intersection. That's why they were ineligible. We could have gone and requested that, and made our argument, and maybe made them state aid eligible, but it would have added time and dollars just to get to that point. So we figured doing a budget amendment for that $69,000, and there was a good balance in the revolving construction fund, that we thought this would be a better approach.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I have.
I like that way of thinking. That was interesting.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. And... Come on. Let me dismantle everything over here, all right. We are up to our open mic, public comment portion of the meeting. If anybody is here for open mic, open mic provides an opportunity for the public to address the city council on subjects that are not part of the regular meeting agenda. The public is invited to express any concerns they may have, which are relevant to the affairs, policies... The public is invited to express any concerns they may have, which are relevant to the affairs, policies, or practices of the city of Coon Rapids. Remarks will be limited to three minutes. Should you wish to participate in open-mic, please approach the podium and state your name and address before addressing the council. All remarks will be made from the podium and addressed to the council as a whole. Open-mic is not a time for problem-solving or reacting to the comments made, but for hearing the speaker for informational purposes only. Questions from council will be for clarification only, and if necessary, a staff report will be prepared for the next regular council meeting with a copy forwarded to the speaker. So, anybody here for open-mic?
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. My name is Zach Arco. I'm actually a resident of Blaine. My address is one-two-zero-four-one Madison Street Northeast. I'm here because I do have business in Coon Rapids. So, this year, there is an election there for the Anoka Henepin School Board. And because this is an off-cycle election, so it's not a presidential, it's not a midterm, state and federal laws pertaining to things like putting up yard signs don't actually apply in the off-cycle election, so it kind of falls to, like, local counties and cities. So, there's kind of a weird conundrum that's come up, because in a typical election year, and I should also state, I'm going to be running for the Anoka Henepin School Board for District Two, which has Ward Two, Precinct Two in Coon Rapids in it. So, as it stands right now, I believe the city ordinance from Coon Rapids allows for yard signs to be put up, I believe it's like forty-five or forty-six days before the general election, which actually falls on like, I believe it's the first day that early voting begins. So, it's, in a normal election year, that doesn't really happen because there's primaries, so you can put your signs up in advance of the primary, so that problem is kind of averted. I think this is just a weird technicality that really, I don't think anyone thought of. Because, I mean, you've all ran for office, you understand probably the value of yard signs, and the key is you want to put them up before the election begins, not once the election has started. So, what I would ask of you guys, and I've actually gone before the Blaine City Council at the same request, because they have the same kind of weird technicality. I would ask that you would just modify the ordinance to allow yard signs to be put up in advance of the election, to throw out a number, I don't know, forty-five days or whatever seems best for you guys, but just something that's before September twenty-second would be what I request. So, and I think my campaign manager is looking into this. I believe Andover has addressed this problem by allowing pretty much what I'm asking for, just like yard signs to be put up in advance of early voting. So, that might be a model to follow after, but whatever the case, there's my question and request for you guys. I have a little letter, should I give it to the...
You can. I'm pretty sure we've already presented the information from your campaign manager, and they're already discussing it.
Oh, okay, okay. I didn't know, like, how far along the process was, so I figured I'd pay a visit and just kind of make the chase.
Do you think that's who it is? I'm not sure. We got the email anyway.
Okay. Well, thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. All right. What else here for council comments? All right, I'm sorry, open-mic?
Good evening. Quick question. I'm the guy that has contacted, I think, a few of you about a group home. My name's John Maroslaw. Reside at two-zero-two-eight-one-twenty-third Avenue, Coon Rapids. I've tried to get on the agenda, don't know how to get onto it, but I'd like and ask if I can have more than three minutes of your time, because I think it's worthy, and my wife will cede my time, other members who could participate would also cede their time.
Well, how much you need, John?
Maybe five minutes?
You can go five minutes.
All right. Not a public speaker. But anyways...
Take your time, you're fine, just relax.
So, I've been a twenty-eight-year resident, Coon Rapids, in my current place, twenty-six years. First twenty-three years, fantastic, great neighborhood, great people. Unbeknownst to us, our neighbor who had been our neighbor for ten years, you know, did a lot of help for him and stuff like that, up in, moved and informed us and changed the resident next door to a group home. It's her first initial, I guess, venture into businesses, and so she's been operating group homes for three years. She now is three in Coon Rapids. And basically, since that time, our neighbors, Mark, Alicia, we've essentially been held hostage, tormented by just various acts of aggression. I don't know how many of you would tolerate your children listening to people swearing, MF'er, literally a hundred times over the last three years and such. It's not getting any better. I'll try to speed it up. This owner has the three places in Coon Rapids, each one in the last two and a half years has had between twenty and twenty-seven police reported activities. That's each one. Ours in particular, we're at twenty-seven. It's not getting better. Since the first of this year, we have had eleven police responses, not including the last two, which were medical emergencies, last night and the night before, where your police officers, fire response, ambulance shows up, but those look like, you know, legitimate medical problems. But the things we've witnessed, we've witnessed domestic abuse, endless, you know, depending on the rotation of the patients, endless amounts of the smell of marijuana. It's going to be legal here coming up, but hasn't been in the past few years. We have brought the concern up to the owner, and specifically, if you need a reference, it's We Care Home Health Services LLC, run by Matilda Apiong. I'm not sure if I have the last name spelled correctly, but we brought the concerns up, and her response is, well, they have weed cards, and there's nothing really I can do. The neighbors enough, you know, find it suspicious, that cars pull up in the middle of the night, someone runs out from the house, and they run back, and the car drives off. So, it seems odd that it's totally an issue with weed cards, being that they like to smoke in the second story and blow it out the bathroom window. Let's see, we had, I got a video, if you want to see a guy screaming, "Kill you" as loud as he can at midnight on...
I think it was March twelfth?
Do you want the video, or do you want to listen to it? Can we play it, or no?
No, we're not set up to play it, no.
I mean, I can play on my phone and...
You can email it to us as an attachment if you'd like.
Witnessed in, on May sixteenth, outside spraying weeds in my yard, very loud resident, the one that probably generates eighty percent of the complaints, yelling and screaming at a taxi driver because he showed up at the wrong time to bring him to the pharmacy to pick up his meds. Nothing different than that, so I turned my back. Guy walks up, and he goes, "Boom, boom, boom," hard as a kid. Dent still in the garage door, pounded in a section of the small garage door in the house, still there. Two days later, well, I had never texted Matilda before, my wife has, and for the most part, she's been unresponsive. Just for the record, we have contacted, neighbors have contacted her many times, and it's more of a, I'll note it, but no response taken. So, I said, "All right, well, I'll text her." So, I text her and said, "In case you're wondering about the property damage on your garage door", I said, "One of your residents decided, after arguing with the taxi driver, it was in his best interest to pound the dent in into the garage." Simple enough. Two days later, this guy's been there two years, never approached me, never talked to me. My wife, my son, my neighbor, we're in the garage, in the driveway, our driveway, I'm working on the boat, and here comes this resident, violent. He's been yelling, screaming, swearing at people, tormenting the people that he also works with, or lives within group home. So, all of a sudden, we look up, here he comes across my front yard, smoking one hand, drinking the other. He's under the influence clearly, because evidently, as an at-will group home, you might be medicated, you might be surrounded with patients and other residents that have drug, alcohol dependency issues. It's up to their, it's their decision if they want to drink alcohol. Guy comes up, he's half-cocked, walks up, he goes, "Who owns the house?" Wife goes like that, "No, not you, no, the one that filed the complaint." All right. Comes up to me, and he wanted to apologize, which I thought was, you know, that's nice, considering he was drunk. Then he proceeds, he commends me on my text, my grammar and punctuation on my text to the owner that she evidently sent to him was commendable. So, he can basically seek me out. There's been other instances this has happened. I apologize, I know, I'm assuming I'm way over five minutes.
Oh, yeah.
Can I continue, or...
No, but this is very important. So, are you close to wrapping up? Because I think we've got, I think we understand...
You got the gist. I just want to finish up just a little bit more.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so I think I mentioned, there have been, it's been getting worse, not better since she's opened. You know, it escalated to June twentieth. Neighbor bringing up her garbage from the street, had no prior communication, contact. A new resident, so they got rid of the one that, you know, came up and approached me, brought in a new resident. This gentleman proceeds to go up their driveway and threaten to kill her multiple times. Proceeds stand-up, back down at the group home. Did you get the video? Any chance you shared it with them? Because I can certainly share it to you, and there's two and a half minutes.
I shared it with the mayor and some...
Yes, two and a half minutes of a guy standing on his, okay, without the obscenities. But, so, I guess that's the worst of the worst. One other incident I would like to bring up is that on Memorial Day, and I guess, a vulnerable adult, she's been at the facility for a while, broke open second-story window and was screaming and yelling incoherently on the garage roof. And the other gentleman with the video was on the garage roof. So, now, twice within the last six weeks, you got vulnerable adults, mental health patients on garage roofs. It's not a far fall for particularly the older lady, she's probably fifty to sixty, very feeble, very slow-moving. I don't know, I guess my last comment would be, I have filed five reports with the DHS. Their utter disregard for mental health community is absolutely appalling. I've talked to them on the phone, and they don't care. They don't care if they abuse each other, if there's domestic abuse. The only thing that seemed to perk their interest a little bit was I said, "So, it doesn't concern you that people, vulnerable adults, are on the second story, climbing up on the garage roofs, walking around, screaming incoherently, threatening to kill people, coming up in my driveway, violent people?" Well, there's rules and regulations, and that's all they would say. What, their mistreatment or lack of response to the mental health community, it's absolutely appalling. And my final thought is, this is not a condemnation at all on group homes and the services they provide. This is the specific owner of this group home, because she's basically pillaging this community. I have not talked to the other two facilities, but I'm assuming their experiences around these facilities are the same as ours, judging by the amount of the police reports. And then my next guest I would like to call up is Rich, who, sixteen-year resident, actually was forced to leave the city of Coon Rapids.
And I'd like for you to hear their story.
Hi. Thank you very much. Rich and Mindy Ruktarczyk, we lived on one-two-two-five-five Osage Street. Mr. Mayor, Brad, I actually emailed both of you about a year and a half, two years ago, because it was bad for us. We were threatened.
The children were threatened and sworn at. If we weren't in the backyard, they felt the need to come to the fence and speak to them and say not-so-nice things, where they'd be running, screaming for us. So, they were too afraid to even play on their own...
Do you have children? Children here? How would you feel if your eight-year-old daughter was running up, afraid to use her backyard? How would that make you feel? I called the cops numerous times. I was told, "There's nothing you guys can do. Just keep calling the cops. Just keep calling the cops."
But even the owners were disrespectful to us. If we did call We Care and talk to them, and they had the nerve to yell at us and scream at us, they'd come to the fence and yelled at us for complaining and telling us it was our fault, that they yell at our kids and at us.
That they have a right to be in this neighborhood.
And they have the right to behave that way. So, they said it was acceptable behavior, and our children were out of line for playing in the backyard.
So, ultimately, we had enough of it. And I think it was a sergeant from Coon Rapids, the last time I spoke to him, he told me, "You got two options. You keep calling the cops, or you move." I moved. We actually turned down an offer that was twenty thousand dollars higher on our home because they had children. So, we sold it to a single gentleman, because why should they go through what we went through? So, that's the type of community you had, but because of this group home and what these people are experiencing right now, this is what you have currently. Now, we're residents of Andover, absolutely love it.
And unfortunately, we ended up moving out of that home July first without even a home to move into yet.
Homeless for nine weeks, because we had to get out of there that quickly. So, that's what your city is turning into. And I know that home, all the police know who it is. We saw drug deals on the corner. We saw all this. A person died, OD'd directly behind us, bound him with a needle in his arm. That's the type of home this is. So, fortunately for my family, we no longer, thank God, have to put up with this. But for these people right here, it's your responsibility to take care of this. Otherwise, come to Andover, it's great.
It is.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, and we'll prepare something for you. And it's not an indictment on all group homes. I think we have two-hundred-and-fifty group homes in our community, I thought was what the census was. And most of them, you're not even aware of. The one in my neighborhood, we know it's a group home, but it's just another home.
Can I just ask one question?
Oh, I'm sorry, was there anybody else that wanted to address?
The gentleman there did.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, and then...
I just have one question.
Yeah, but I would have to have you from the...
Good evening.
Yes, sir.
I've been a Coon Rapids resident for twenty-five years. I live at two-zero-two-three-hundred-and-twenty-third Avenue Northwest, right across the street from this group home. And I know you don't want to, I can't play any videos, but I have several videos.
Sure. What was your name, sir?
Mark Swedine.
Mark Swedine?
Swedine, yep. Also, one that you guys didn't mention, the, one of the residents from the group home, walking around in his underwear and a tank top through the neighborhoods. Did get called on, he did get picked up. But my wife takes care of our grandkids, and with everything that goes on there, they're in the backyard. I mean, we got new power wheels for these kids, and there's just no way. I mean, we live on a cul-de-sac because it's a cul-de-sac. Nothing but the backyard. We put a six-foot privacy fence up, because we don't want our grandkids, three and five, to, you know, it's just... He's spot on. It's nuts, it's bad. Lots of videos, if you want to see them. Lot of traffic at night. People stopping, coming and going within minutes, people running from the back and coming up to the front, grabbing something out of a car, running in the back. I'm the one that called nine-one-one for the guy that was yelling stuff at midnight. And it went on for ten minutes. I called nine-one-one, the nine-one-one operator said, "I can hear him." I said, "I just need someone to go over there and do a welfare check. I don't know if, you know, God forbid, something, you know, but that's what's going on." Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else for council comments? I'm sorry, I did it again. Open-mic, open-mic. You can come up for an answer, ask a question, and then, sure. Name an address if you want to get an answer.
Deb Maroslaw, and we're at two-zero-two-eight-hundred-and-twenty-third Avenue, Coon Rapids. I just have one question, and it, again, it's not anything about group homes, but again, we've been living there for so long and had no idea, and I had said to Matilda, "Well, she would have told us." You know, we would have had that option to leave or stay or whatever. But, looking at your... But looking at your rules, there are no rules unless there's, I think, seven or more people moving in, you can just start a group home. But if you're a resident and you want four dogs, you have to get the okay. Why, why is that? It used to be three dogs because my neighbor needed therapy dogs, and I got a letter in the mail asking me if it was okay if he had three dogs. And I was like, well, of course, you know, he can have three dogs. But now it's four dogs. It makes no sense, you know? It's kind of a disservice to the community. Just something to think about, food for thought, right?
Thank you. Anybody else here for open mic this evening? Okay. The staff will create a response. And thank you for coming. I, I mean, we can feel your frustration. I mean, I, I understand, and I really understand the frustration dealing with DHS because we dealt with them on a house in town here, several trips down there, several state reps, state senators involved, and he was talking to a wall. So if it's just this one particular owner that's a problem, maybe there is something we can do, I don't, I don't know, but staff will look into it and thank you for coming tonight, thank you for sharing your experience, and I just feel terrible about it.
So you're saying there's hope?
I don't know. If it involves DHS, I'm not saying there's hope.
We appreciate you guys.
Yeah, oh, oh, well, that's our job. Thank you very much. All right. If there's nobody else here for open mic, we'll close that portion of the meeting. And we're up to, I don't have any reports from previous open mics, so we're up to other business.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
And maybe I'll punt over to Captain Steiner in a second, but Night to Unite is coming up in a couple of weeks, the registration deadline for parties, if you want to have an event and get on the list and have the police show up or the fire department show up. That deadline is July 24th, so the event is on Tuesday, August 1st. And so Captain Steiner, if there's anything you want to add to what fun people can have during Night to Unite?
Sure. It is fast approaching, there is a deadline, although we encourage you to, you know, we'll try to, we'll try to accommodate everybody we can. It gets to be a very busy night, the numbers are good. They're creeping up slowly and the stragglers are, are, are making their requests and, like I said, we plan on honoring every one of them. So it's a great opportunity to get a police officer, firefighters, some of you, I know the council will be out there and mayor. It's a great opportunity to ask questions, to get to know your neighbors, and to, to just have a positive experience in your neighborhood and enjoy some time together. We, we look forward to it every year. We've got a really big response and we get to all the parties as best we can, so encourage you to do it if you haven't done it. And we see a lot of the same parties every year and it's great every year.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Novak?
My wife and I have lived in a cul-de-sac for about 19 years here in Coon Rapids, and let me tell you, Night to Unite works really good in a cul-de-sac.
And then, Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
The other one, and it's a little closer, on Thursday, so just a couple of days away, is another concert in the park. That is the Naked Cowboys, so it's a country band. And my hope is that they, it's just the name.
And not that whole New York guy.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, yeah, and the Thursday night concert's down in the, in the, at the Coon Rapids Dam. We've got the food from the North Star Lions, you've got the Boy Scout troops selling popcorn and beverages and candy, and it's just a really nice event to grab your lunch here and go and have a nice evening. Other business? Farmers Market's going Wednesday afternoons, is it 3:00 to 6:00?
Yes, it is.
I think it's on 3:00 to 6:00. And that'll just continue to build through the rest of the year. Somebody's down there with jams and baked goods.
Honey.
Honey? Oh, I thought you were just talking to me. All right. Any other, any other business? Mr. Stemmerly, you look like you're ready to go with something.
Mayor, council, I was just going to mention, we had a very successful Summer in the City Meeting Series this summer, wrapped up last Tuesday at Bolivar Plaza, a little bit of rain interference came through, but actually we had a pretty good attendance, I thought, given what looked like worse weather than it turned out to be. But we had great attendance at the previous two, I think really it was kind of a record year from that perspective, and wanted to thank all the staff. There's a lot of hours that go into being there and, and talking to residents, and it's a really great opportunity for interaction and sort of learning on a number of phases of both municipal government. There's other agencies that show up too, like the U of M Extension and things like that. So we're gonna do it again next year, I imagine. We don't have any particular plans, other than it's usually the second, fourth Tuesday in June, the first Tuesday in, or the second Tuesday in July. And it'll be a pretty similar format, but we'll switch up the parks and do it all over again.
Excellent. Yeah, I think we were up over 200 pieces of ice cream at the last...
Yes. Ice cream budget, we blew right through that.
All right. And then, yes, Councilmember Armstrong?
Just a quick comment, if the Night to Unite organizers are handing out the little Rocky magnets and the Rocky stickers, my granddaughter confiscated mine.
I might be able to get you one before you leave.
Yeah, and then just a reminder, our next council meeting, because of Night to Unite being Tuesday night, our next council meeting will be the first Wednesday of August. When is the, they used to, and I don't even know what the group is, it used to be Transformative Circle. Now they're organized, a community event for Night to Unite. Last year, it was on the Monday night, but it seems like, is it, is it, is it a different day this?
Councilmember Ray Rower may have some information.
I love your neighbor, but I am on vacation that week with the nephew's wedding, so unfortunately I don't.
So you don't know what it is?
Yeah. The Coon Rapids women of today are sort of spearheading that this year, is that correct? Councilmember Ray Rower?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and they mentioned that when they were here.
Yes.
Because we declared July 1st as their day in town. Well, okay, very good. It's got lots of sponsorships, it's got lots of dances. Captain Steiner?
The Love My Neighbor is on the, if the 5th is a Saturday, it's that, it's that night.
Saturday, the what?
I think it's the 5th.
Yeah, I just found it. So it is Saturday, August 5th, 12:00 PM to 5:00 PM at the Coon Rapids, Coon Rapids Soccer Complex. Join us for food, music, dancing, performances, storytelling, and fun.
So it's after Night to Unite this year, then? Okay, very good. Saturday, August 5th, all right. Okay, any other business to come before council?
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Novak to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.